Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the August Planning Commission meeting for Paulding County. This time, I would ask if you have any audible devices, cell phones, maybe a beeper, please turn it off or silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. Audible devices, right? This time, I would ask if Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review the minutes that were in your packet, and if you had any questions, comments, or edits. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of this body.
Move to accept the minutes presented.
A motion to approve by Ms. Turnbill, second by Mr. Aston, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Everybody, I want to go ahead and go over a couple of ground rules. We're going to dispose of the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. Those are probably posted at the back table in this room or just outside in the lobby, if you'd like to take one for a bit of quick reading. Also, this is a recommending body. Every application that's considered by this Planning Commission will be reviewed and then made a recommendation and forwarded to the governing body, be it Paulding County Board of Commissioners. And if that's the case, it would be at tonight's meeting at seven o'clock for the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. If it is in the jurisdiction of the City of Hiram, it will be forwarded to the City of Hiram and a date determined for the next available meeting for it to be heard. Again, anybody wishing to speak, or anybody applicant has 15 minutes to present their application, and they may use all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of that application would speak during that same portion of 15 minutes. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns, you also have 15 minutes collectively to speak. If you have a number of people waiting to speak, please be courteous and remember they should have an ability to get up and speak at the lectern. You need to come forward to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair, which is myself. And at this time, Mr. Robinson, you have the first application.
Okay. Good afternoon. First application is 2019-13Z, application by Jonathan Jones to rezonate approximately 16.265 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to R55 Active Adult Residential District for age-restricted subdivision development. Property is located in Land Lot 1265, District 3, Section 3. It's on the west side of Mount Taber Church Road, west of Holland Road. It's in Commission Post 1, and that would have 81 lots. And staff has recommended approval with five printed stipulations. And we have received three phone calls with questions.
Is the applicant present?
Applicant is present.
Applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Chair, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners and staff. My name is Jonathan Jones, and I'm with ALLETE. I am here representing Blue Stem Development for a proposed development of 16.25 acres on Mount Taber Church Road, just slightly past Holland Road. The proposed development would be a R55 Active Adult Residential District zoning. Proposed number of units would be 81 units. We are, my client is in acknowledgement that the project is in accordance with the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and that the proposed buffers, we acknowledge those and accept those. And we have reviewed the five zoning stipulations. We've had some discussion with the Director of the DOT regarding the right turn lane, and we wish to request a modification of that zoning stipulation, that right turn lane, right and left turn lanes be determined through, by way of a traffic study. And if warranted from traffic study, then client would be more than willing to install said right and turn, right and left turn lanes. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about this development or save the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
So just to confirm, you are in agreement with all the remaining stipulations listed?
Yes, sir.
We will address the question that you brought up with DOT Director shortly. Any questions for the applicant from Planning Commission? Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant? Mr. Carmichael. If y'all would please pass the microphone down to Mr. Carmichael.
I was interested in a clarification on sewer. I thought I was getting it mixed up with one of the other applications, but just go ahead and clarify while we're still on this one.
Sewer is not immediately available at the property. There is another proposed development in this area, and sewer would most likely be with a pump station down to the north of the lakes shown on the, on the, on the map in your package to serve multiple developments in that area.
Mr. Carmichael, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from either the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. The other, Mr. Jones, Director. The question that was brought up by the other Mr. Jones regarding the traffic study to whether or not it would warrant a left and right turn lane, do you have any kind of input on that that you would like to consider, have us consider?
Yes, Mr. Jones had emailed me, Mr. Jones, the other Mr. Jones, about 10 o'clock this morning, asking to basically waive the left turning stipulation as put in the, for this development, and instead do a traffic study to determine if that was warranted. We're agreeable to that. Again, the left and right turn lanes are in the development regulations. If the traffic study did show that the turn lanes were not warranted, they would have to go through the Development Waiver Committee anyways and get it approved there there also.
All right.
I'd like to ask Mr. Jones, while he's got the microphone there. Is the minimum site distance met, that was, that's, that's a bad area right there as far as that curve there at Holland Road, does that meet the minimum site distance required?
Again, as part of this, they're going to have to meet the requirements based on a 45 mile per hour speed limit, which Mount Taber Church Road did. They're going to have to meet the left, the right, the stopping, and the left turn site distance.
I've never seen anybody run 45 down that road.
I do. Just saying.
Oh, you do?
Let the record show. That's right. Getting a little feedback here, sorry. Just one question on Mount Taber Road, is that a radar certified road, so the posted speed limit is a certified speed limit?
Yes, it is. It is certified for the Paulding County Sheriff's Office to run speed detection devices at 45 miles per hour.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions to the staff from the Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners? Okay. Is anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2019-13-Z. Please keep in mind that there is a modification requested to the requirement of the left turn lane, which would be stipulation number two, that a traffic study would be performed to determine the need and feasibility of a right and left turn lane. Take the motion now if anybody would give it.
Motion to approve with the modification of stipulation number two.
Of a motion to approve by Mr. Lowe with a modified number two stipulation. All other stipulations, one through, one, three, four, and five, be in place. And a second by Ms. Turnbill, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration this evening at seven. The applicant has to be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Next application, 2019-14Z, City of Hiram, application by Ahab Singh to rezonate approximately 0.115 acres from R4 Multi-Family Non-Fees Simple Rental Residential District to B1 General Business District and to annex into the City of Hiram, and combine to the adjoining .45 acre tract to the east. That particular tract is zone B1 General Business in the City of Hiram. Property is located in Land Lots 386, 387, 406, 407, District 2, Section 3. It's on the north side of Atlanta Highway, east of Cobbler Cove Drive, it's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval and with no noted stipulations. And we have had just one call from the adjoining property owner with questions.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Are you the applicant, sir? State your name, please.
My name is Ernest Williams.
And you represent the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Okay. This is your opportunity to present your application to the Planning Commission, to give us any details that you might feel are relevant for our consideration.
No, not at all.
You're good with what we've read?
Would you repeat that, sir?
This is your opportunity to present your application to the, to the Planning Commission and give us any details you feel would be relevant to our consideration of it.
Well, it is a package store on Atlanta Highway, and we're adding on to the building. And we have started construction on the building.
And this rezoning pertains to the sliver of property immediately to the west of the main property?
That is correct.
And you're going to combine the two, is that what the intent is?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any questions for the applicant regarding this application? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. You can take your seat unless you have anything further you want to say.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would like to speak against this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? I have one question to our county attorney, our Planning Commission attorney. This is a piece of property that's applied for rezoning while it is still in the unincorporated area of Paulding County, so this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for rezoning, or will this be part of the overall adoption and annexation by the City of Hiram?
So I've thought about that. I figured you'd ask that question. I believe tonight it'll go in front of the Board of Commissioners for, for a decision on the rezoning application.
Got it.
I think as it stands right now, it has not technically been annexed into the City of Hiram, although it's on the agenda. Hiram does have the work session tonight, but it will not be a voting session. Considered or approved tonight. So I believe it would be appropriate for the Board of Commissioners to render the decision because as of tonight, it will remain in the county.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson, will you make note of that, that we're going to render this decision and forward the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for consideration for tonight's meeting at seven? At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to 2019-14-Z. It says City of Hiram, but it will be Paulding County Board of Commissioners' consideration.
Motion to approve.
Of a motion to approve from Mr. Lowe, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Turnbill, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. You must be present for the application to be considered at tonight's meeting at seven with the Board of Commissioners in this meeting room.
Thank you. Next application is 2019-10SUP, application by Towercom 5 LLC for a special use permit on approximately 45.68 acres for a 195-foot monopole wireless telecommunication facility, standard of 199 with antenna on top. Property is located in Land Lot 1034, District 19, Section 2, on the east side of Cleveland Parkway, and it's east of Bennett Road, and it's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval on this one also.
And is the applicant present?
Applicant is present.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. I'm Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney at Parker Poe, and I have the pleasure of representing the applicant with respect to, as Chris put it, a monopole cellular communications facility or a cell tower, if we want to just be plain about it. This is on about a 48-acre piece of property. It meets all of the county's zoning requirements, and with your indulgence, I just give you a little bit of background as to how we got to this and who's looking to use it. To give you background, AT&amp;T's RF engineers are tasked with making sure your phones work in their network. They look at the demand for not only being able to make a phone call, but being able to use your phone, your smartphone, for everything else that you do, and that, more importantly, that my kids do now, on their cellphone, like watch videos or do homework and classwork. They looked at this area of the county, and if I can, is it okay with you if I put something up? I have hard copies of these as well, but I thought it'd be just easier maybe to give you a little bit of view. This is similar to the map that Chris put up, just to give you an overview of where they were looking at. They have an existing network in this area of the county, but based on customer and radio frequency data, they identified a need for a new facility in this area, both to work with existing towers they already have and to offload some traffic in the area, including to serve these residential areas that you see totally surrounding this property. AT&amp;T asked Towercom, which is my client, to help it locate a facility in the area, whether it was by colocation, whether it was on county-owned property, whether it was on anything that existed that would meet their radio frequency needs and be the right height to work with their network for their radio frequency needs. Towercom looked in this area for an existing tower. There is not one. The nearest AT&amp;T tower is about two miles away, and there's not an existing tower that we could co-locate on in this area of the county. Instead, there's nothing tall enough, you know, existing building tall enough, anything that would meet the need, and so they've proposed this new tower. They also look for a piece of property that does not require any variance, any rezoning, that only requires the special exception permit, or special use permit, rather. So they brought this application forward. The application materials that the county requires for your ordinance include everything from a Phase 1 environmental survey that includes going through all of the FAA, FCC, and other national and state approvals, and of course, presenting this application to you all for a special use permit. This property is 45.68 acres. It is part of the Bookout Family Estate, Bobby Jean Bookout. His family owns property to the west as well, but what you see with the green arrow is the proposed site on this unimproved acre acreage. Towercom has leased about 3,600 feet, square feet, along with access and utility easement to get the tower onto the site, and they're looking to build a 195-foot monopole. I want to just show you, if you don't mind, to give you an idea. This is hard to see, but the little box that is right here is the proposed tower site. It is 300 feet to the property line to the north, 300 feet to the property line to the west, more than 500 feet to the property line to the east, and more than 1,000 feet to the property line to the south. Your tower ordinance requires that the tower be constructed at least tower height plus 100 feet away from any property line. We meet all of those requirements. We also submitted as part of our application materials all the structural calculations and analysis, including what is called, what lawyers don't like to call it, but what we call it, a fall zone letter, which is a certified structural engineer's letter that says if the tower falls, if there is a catastrophe, and that includes hurricanes, you know, Cat V is the standard that the state requires and the federal government requires, this tower will be built to that standard. The fall zone radius is the height of the tower for this tower, but they're not designed to fall like a pin. They're designed to have a breakpoint technology so that if there is high wind, anything like that, it crumples and falls on itself. It does not fall in a straight line, but even if it did, we've got more than 300 feet radius around this particular site. Just to give you a visual, and this admittedly is far away, but that is the proposed tower. There's a radio tower that's right here that would not support colocation, but just gives you a visual. That's from Hill Road. As you can see in the bottom, that's about 2,000 feet away. This is a view from Mudlark Circle. That's about 1,500 feet away, and the tower juxtaposed. This is just a photograph simulation of what it would look like. It is intended to be 195 feet. It would allow for colocation, not just AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T would be at a rad center of 190 feet, meaning its antennas would be at the top. It has room and is designed to support up to five additional carriers. So not just the traditional carriers, but should the county need it for E911 or other services, it would be structurally sound and would support the county's equipment as well, should that be a need in the future. We submitted radio frequency engineering reports, and I'm happy to go through those. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and appreciate your consideration of this special use permit request. Thank you.
I would just confirm with you, we may have questions for you.
Sure.
But the radio frequency report you did did not generate any kind of concerns with crossing up with other signals, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You said you did the report, just to make sure that everybody understood that.
That's correct.
Is there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? That was quick. Didn't mean to cut anybody off. Anybody have questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? May have questions, comments, or concerns? At this time, I will entertain a motion for application 2019-10-SUP.
Move to approve as presented.
Of a motion to approve by Ms. Turnbill, a second by Mr. Aston, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you leaving right now?
Okay, I'd like to have your card before you leave.
Absolutely.
We'll discuss something else.
Yes.
Next application is 2019-11-SUP, application by Richard M. Mayo for a special use permit on approximately 35 acres for wedding slash reception venue. Property is located in Land Lots 927 and 964, in District 19, Section 3. It's on the north side of Buckhannon Circle, east of Old Yorkville Road, it's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval with eight printed stipulations, and we have not any noted cause of opposition or anything on this one, and the applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your
Hello, Chair, Committee. My name's Richard Mayo. I'm looking to rezonate this property to special use. I would like to primarily use the property as a residence while having a small boutique wedding venue in the front with minimal events, no more than four a month. I'd like to maintain a 100-foot buffer on the exterior of the property to minimize impact to fellow neighbors and really just have a upscale, small weddings, you know, a few times a month.
Okay. All right. Are you familiar with the eight listed stipulations?
Yes, I am, the recommendations.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm agreeable to all of those, but I was going to see if we could have a little bit of exception here. In my, in my site plans, I wanted to have an outside open-air pole barn with, for dancing, and I was wondering if we could have outdoor music. I'm not looking to have, you know, a concert of any sorts, but, you know, minimal low-decibel music so guests could enjoy outdoor dancing. The second is that the driveway, at the beginning of the property, there is a pond, and the driveway to access the remaining, the rest of the property, the driveway might need to come into the 100-foot buffer slightly at the beginning of the property. Also, I was going to ask if we could conclude the events before 11:00 PM as opposed to the 10:00 PM. I understand if these are deal breakers, but these are things that I was going to check and see.
Restate the last thing you said.
I, I, I'm open to the suggestion. I just wanted to, you know, see if it was a possibility to, to go to 11:00 PM as opposed to the recommended 10:00 PM and conclude before 11:00 PM.
All right. Well, we can, we can take that into consideration.
Thank you.
We'll speak with, to the staff. I don't know if there's anything that could be amended during this meeting. It may be a requirement for you to speak to staff after this meeting takes place.
Of course.
And then that will be up to the Board of Commissioners ultimately to determine what, if any, modifications to the existing stipulations are made. I know that the driveway, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the driveway moving within any kind of a non-disturbance buffer such as a pond, there's a 25-foot state mandated non-disturbance buffer, and then there's a 75, another 50 feet, which is a total of 75 feet, that the county adds to that. That would require a variance, which is different from this process, through the county's Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Robinson, would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would have to be determined and then modified after this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as sound, Mr. Phillips, do you want to address that?
Yes, sir. Just addressing that Paulding County has a noise ordinance in regard to music. It basically prohibits music from being played after 10:00 in the evening at a point that it's clearly audible at a distance of 50 feet. So that noise ordinance is going to control activities on this property.
But softly played, there's no issues. I don't know how you gauge that.
Most likely, yeah.
You can stand 50 feet away and see if you can still hear it. And as far as an amendment to the time, Mr. Robinson, can you tell me where that stipulation comes from? That would be stipulation number eight, is that correct?
That's correct. Normally... Normally, on any type of rural area businesses, it's normally recommended around ten PM as a closing time.
Recommendation? Is that based on just practice?
That's, it's actually, it's actually for rural business that you're limited to ten PM closing. I know this is a special use permit, but we were kind of trying to keep it in that realm also.
Any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
How close is the nearest neighbor?
The closest neighbor is going to be, you know, from, I mean, I guess it really depends where you stand. The property is almost seven hundred feet wide and almost a half a mile in depth square. You know, if you're, there was a previous existing driveway at the beginning of the property, the closest neighbor, I'm going to guess, is going to say five hundred feet from the previous driveway when I purchased the property in April.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Mr. Aston?
You met with Captain Kendrick and his team with the Paulding County Fire Rescue, and they, he wrote a letter with eight things to consider. Are you in agreement with all those?
Yes, sir, one hundred percent.
Okay.
I wanted to ask Wayne Baron with the Fire Department if they had any concerns with this.
Mr. Baron, would you care to step to the microphone?
I just wanted to know if you had any concerns with this venue, if everything had been met as far as your standards.
Yeah, when we met with Mr. Mayo, we discussed the requirements because of the Life Safety Code on the assembly occupancy, and he's agreed to, like I said, meet all the requirements of the code for those.
Thanks, Lord.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you.
Take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2019-11-SUP. And again, the motion, you can consider the requested modifications. Again, the driveway would have to be determined at a subsequent meeting of the Paulding County Board of Zoning Appeals for any variance to the non-disturbance buffer around the pond. The other items asked to be considered was the sound, but Mr. Phillips addressed that with regard to the county's ordinance. And then there is the amendment of time from the ten AM closing to an eleven, excuse me, ten PM closing to an eleven PM closing. So...
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Striking, stipulation number five, since the noise ordinance controls that, and then give consideration to the eleven PM.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Lowe, and is that striking number five altogether?
Striking number five altogether. So, I mean, if county ordinance controls it, why put it here?
Let's, I'm fine with that too, but Mr. Phillips, do you want to chime in on that?
If I'm looking, if I'm looking at applicant agrees to no outside audio systems, so Mr. Lowe, that's the subject of the striking.
Right.
Yeah. He would, he, what that means is that he can use outside audio systems, but those outside audio systems need to be in compliance with county noise ordinance.
Which would have to be done anyway.
Yes.
So, forgive me for my caution. I just want to make sure.
It's a good question.
All right. So, with the striking of number five, what was the additional comment you made, Mr. Lowe?
That just since the county noise ordinance would ultimately control that.
So, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Turnbull. All in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. And again, this application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at seven o'clock. Applicant will need to be present for it to be considered.
One question, just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear the entire thing, and I don't touch it either, but we were listening, we just didn't hear. Did that, did that motion for a recommendation of approval also include the change to stipulation number eight for eleven PM?
Yes.
Change to eleven PM?
Well, I consider the change.
So, the motion was to be made that it also amended the time to eleven PM on stipulation number eight. Do we need to go through the process again, Mr. Phillips, just to make sure?
Mr. Lowe, is that your motion?
That was my motion, yes.
Ms. Turnbull, is that what you seconded? I believe, is there any commissioner who...
So, there's a motion and a second in agreement. Do I need to call for the vote again?
I would say just call for it.
I'll call for the vote on that motion then, with the understanding that it also amends the closing time from ten PM to eleven PM. All in favor? All opposed? You're opposed. Motion then passes five, one, and one. I think we're good. Again, the motion, this, the application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. And, Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2019-02-LUP. Application by Frankie Willingham for a land use permit on approximately seventeen point nine two two seven acres for a shop for landscape company and some storage area for hardwood trees, fruit trees, and shrubs. Property is located in Landlot 1138, District 2, Section 3. It's on the south side of Nebo Road, west of Dallas Nebo Road. It's in Commission Post 3. Recommendation is approval with three printed stipulations. And we have had calls with questions and concerns from adjoining property owner, and the applicant representative is present.
The applicant representative, would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon again. My name is Jonathan Jones with Elite. I am here representing Mr. Willingham for the requested land use permit. He intends to build his personal home on this property, and he intends to build his business on the northeast corner of the property. That would be the property that abuts what's considered agriculture now, but I believe there's a zoning for a PRD by Mr. Rock in that location. The area has a, I guess, a mixture in that corridor there of, I guess, they've got a store in Ingalls, and PRD sounds like applications up, and then there's some church property, and then the school. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulations that have been provided, of which one requires a twenty-five-foot buffer. It says along the Nebo frontage, and that's an acceptance to my client, and he also agrees to build a commercial width drive for access in and out. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions or use the rest of my time for rebuttal.
So, no objection to the stipulations?
No objection. Acceptable as the stipulations.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Jonathan, the access off of Clarice Road is going to be his personal residence, right?
I don't think he's decided exactly where he's going to build his home. So, but yeah, he most likely will provide access off Clarice to his personal home.
Okay, and the shop would be off of Nebo?
Off of Nebo, yes, sir, in that northeast corner there.
Okay, there, Odessa's house is, old house?
Old house, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's correct, yes, sir.
All right.
Any other questions to the applicant from Planning Commission?
Jonathan, he's in the landscaping business. Exactly how many pieces of equipment will he be parking there? Do you have any idea?
Well, so he and I had a discussion so that I could get familiar with answering that question. Most of his equipment stays from job to job, as most contractors does. He says that he owns about fifteen to twenty pieces of equipment, but that includes trailers and everything from lawn mowers to skid steers and such as that. He doesn't own anything larger than a Mini-X, so he doesn't own track hoes or dozers or anything of that nature. So, he would have limited storage. His current facility in the city of Hiram, I'll be honest with you, I don't even think he stores equipment at that location. His biggest need, quite honestly, is to have the ability to store some of his products inside, his pine straw and his hay and irrigation materials and that. And then he would like to get to where he can store some of his trees and landscape materials on-site instead of having to schedule them, to freight time them, and deliver them to the site exactly when he needs them because he doesn't really have a yard to store the actual materials. So, it'd be more for tree storage and brush, bush storage and stuff of that nature. So, the maximum would be if we, he had no work, and he basically had all those equipment there, it'd be less than twenty pieces, but typically, his equipment's off-site.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Mr. Henson?
Is he going to have any larger equipment at a later date to come in, to be parked on this land?
He has no intentions of that. You know, this thing's renewable every two years, Mr. Henson. You know, I would say that it definitely could be addressed, or if you wanted to put places on the stipulation, he couldn't have some, you know, large excavator or something, I think you would be okay with that. It's not his intent. He owns a landscape company. He doesn't intend to develop it into a grading company or anything. So, it's not his intent to do that, to be honest with you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Robert McCully. A few questions, and I think this gentleman maybe had answered a few, but this new barn or building that's going to be constructed is going to be on the northeast corner, which that's closest to the intersection where Ingalls and the Chevron and all that is. Our concern is, our property is on Clarice Road right at the corner of Clarice and Nebo, directly across the street from Nebo Elementary. Out of the three houses that are there, two of those houses have kids, and that is not a real heavily-traveled road. So, you know, there's some bicycles there occasionally and such as that coming from the neighborhoods back down Clarice Road. So, our concern there is the driveway for this maybe new business coming out on Clarice, which I think you touched on that, that that wasn't the intent. It was going to be on Nebo Road. But, you know, that being said, I could see that being changed and it being different. So, that's our main concern is dump trucks and that kind of equipment coming out on Clarice. And then, too, the other thing is, you talk about a twenty-five-foot bumper. You know, they talk about all sides except the west side, which is the Clarice roadside. It doesn't say anything in here in the paperwork about any kind of bumper or anything there to maybe block the view of what this may look like.
So, your question is about the buffer on Clarice Road?
On the Clarice roadside, correct. And the possibility of a driveway that's non-commercial.
Got it. Anything else, sir?
Brittany, did you? I think, I think those questions, plus, you know, the staff comments. I know there's eleven questions that are on the staff comments that I guess will be considered and talked about tonight, maybe.
For it to receive staff comments, that's what the staff considers when giving us a recommendation or giving us the stipulations. They've already considered all of that criteria.
Okay. So, basically, I guess the answer to the eleven were the three that...
Of what they studied, it generated their proposing the three listed stipulations.
Okay, fine.
But we will, we will have further discussion in this meeting once you're done with your presentation about the questions you've brought up.
Okay. Those are, those are our concerns at this time, yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. McCully.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Hearing none. Mr. Jones, would you care to step back to the lectern?
Yes, sir.
Would, I guess, you know, with the question being from Mr. McCully about the concern of a commercial drive, you've indicated that the business portion of this property would be in the northeast corner
That's correct.
with the intended ingressygress being on Nebo Road?
Yes, sir, and we'd be fine with the zoning stipulation, no commercial equipment shall access Clarice Road for any reason.
All right.
And it's eleven hundred and fifty feet, I think, to their property, but my client would also be amenable to putting a twenty-five-foot planted buffer on the west side. He owns a landscape company, so I don't think, I think he'd be okay with that. And you can't, you won't be able to see it, but I can't guarantee that one day he doesn't take the trees down, but that buffer will be there. So, if you want to add that stipulation where it said twenty-five-foot buffer along Nebo, and you put west, and western property line, he'd be amenable to that.
All right. And western property line. Just make sure I'm getting it right.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything else that you wish to add to the discussion?
Unless somebody else has a question, that's...
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2019-02-LUP. And again, there's been an offer by the applicant's representative to add the additional stipulation of no commercial drive on Clarice Road as well as an amendment to the stipulation number three, which would, excuse me, I'm sorry, number two, stipulation number two, which would also add a twenty-five-foot buffer along the western property line along with Nebo Road. Anybody willing to make that motion?
Make the motion to do the four stipulations with the addition of no commercial access on Clarice Road and the twenty-five-foot buffer on number two along Nebo Road and Clarice Road.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Lowe. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, the application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners for consideration. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Next application, 2019-03-LUP. Application by Jonathan D. Robbins for a land use permit renewal on approximately one point nine nine five acres for a part-time firearm repair business and accessory structure. Property is located in Landlots 227 and 232, District 19, Section 2. It's on the south side of Sleepy Hollow Road. It's off in Aisment, and it's east of Ralston Road. Address is 1,004 Sleepy Hollow Road. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval on this one. Applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name's Jonathan Robbins. It's here, I'm again doing a renewal for my land use permit. I don't know, this is probably about the seventh or eighth time in the last fifteen years. Nothing's really changed.
I thought you looked familiar.
I get that a lot.
And is there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Board of Commissioners? The requirement under the OUP is that it is renewable after two years. That's the way that the ordinance is written within the zoning ordinance, so, Mr. Robinson, if you wanna correct me on any of that, you're more than welcome to.
That's correct. This time, that is correct.
Every two years.
He's in a very exclusive club. There's a lot of them around here. Mr. Robinson, thank you very much.
Before I leave, I would like to express my appreciation to Chris and Braden Robinson for the help that they've helped me with in the last, this time. This, this last time for renewal has been one of the easiest, and no, not near as many hoops to jump through to be able to just renew, and whoever else was involved in making those decisions, whether it was the Commissioners or this board here, but I really appreciate the fact that it was just really streamlined and a whole lot easier to, to renew.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, sir. And I know that I'm extremely biased, but I agree with him. You have some of the best staff that Pauling County can ever hope to have working for Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion on application 2019-03-LUP.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Low, a second by Mr. Henson, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. And the same thing, it'll be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners tonight for their consideration. You do need to be present for it to be considered. Quit looking at me like that, I'm getting caught up.
Hey, y'all were waiting on me a few minutes ago.
Please proceed.
Application 2019-04-LUP. Application by Robert Cofield for a land use permit renewal on approximately 8.93 acres for restoration of older hot rods and classic automobiles in an accessory structure. Property is located in Landlot 889, District 2, Section 3. It's on the northwest side of Rich Davis Road, south of Hiram Sooty Road. Address is 594 Rich Davis Road. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with three stipulations. And again, is it the past one, the last one, it was, this is, this is a renewal also.
Thank you.
Applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around and sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Okay, I'm just on renewal, and nothing has changed from the last time.
Is there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Cofield. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion on application 2019-04-LUP.
Have a motion with the three stipulations.
Have a motion from Mr. Leggett with the three listed stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Low, all in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Thank you, everybody. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Low. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Turnbill, all in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Y'all have a marvelous rest of your month.